So with that, I will call the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting to order at 5:35. All members are present consisting of myself, Chair Andre Baumgartner, Councillor David McBride, and Councillor Scott Westervelt. Calendars and Communications. Do councillors have any communications?
I have received various communications regarding the planning and zoning, as well as the historic commission. So we'll talk about that when we get to those points.
Okay.
Yeah, I've received similar communication as well.
Excellent. Yes, as I have. All right. So with that, and we will submit, Betty, I believe you shared the bulk of those communications. I'll be happy after the meeting or sometime tonight, or at least by the end of the week to go through to make sure that there was any correspondence sent directly to me, that I'll send them to you. But I know that the clerk also has them in receipt. I will ask though, I sent over, I'd only ask it that, you know, we would include them in the record that way, you know, folks do know that, so. But.
Chairman, I just, you know, a lot of the things that you have on your agenda over, and then there are them are reappointments and one request to move an alternate up to on the HDC, but everything else is pretty cut and dry.
Excellent. Thank you, Betty. All right. So with that, I sent just a short time ago, just minutes. What it will do is also for tonight's meeting, we'll make sure, I'll touch base with Betsy to make sure that we can include those letters into our, you know, the final record for approval for next week, for next meetings, meeting minutes as well. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the August, I'm sorry. Yes, I will make a motion. Can you hear me? Okay. It's coming a little spotty. I, somebody, it sounded like somebody was talking, but folks have been coming in and out.
I can hear you fine.
All right.
I can hear you fine.
And same for you, Betsy.
Yeah, yes, I can hear you talking to the microphone.
All right. All right. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the August 16th meeting minutes of 2022.
Second, Westerville.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for all those in favor. Please indicate.
Hi.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, 300. Onto new business. We have various personnel appointments up for discussion this evening.
May I make a suggestion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you start with the oldest, which was July 18th for reappearance for the Fair Rec Commission?
Yes, I do understand that suggestion. I do want to get through some, some critical items just for, for purposes of time. And I do want to first address the fact that we have people in the audience who would like to have an interview and one pending item that was, that could not happen at the last meeting was the interview for Mr. McDermott. Bruce McDermott, I know there were some audio issues with that meeting, and so I do want to afford to Mr. McDermott since he did wait the entire, he participated in the entire meeting and because of technical difficulties wasn't unable to to participate in an interview, which was afforded to another applicant for the personal appointment. So out of respect of his time, I do, I would like to ask that he step forward for an interview for the purposes of alternate to personnel, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that would be Bruce McDermott.
You'll have to move him over to panelist.
Mr. McDermott?
Give him a second.
All right.
Can you all hear me? Okay.
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Let me turn the light off here. Hopefully that's a little better.
Thought that was one of those TikTok spotlights. Sorry.
Excellent. Mr. McDermott, welcome to the Personal and Appointments Committee meeting. Very much appreciate your willingness to participate and serve on one of our boards or commissions, just as if, as you've done previously and in the past in several volunteer capacities. So just want to thank you for your interest in continued service to our town. And we'll open the floor up to questions from members of the committee. I know you again participated in the last meeting, so you're familiar with our process. So very formal discussion and just want to get a sense of maybe some as to why you are interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate.
Sure. Well, I'm on the zoning board of appeals currently. And so I'm a bit familiar with the zoning that we have in town. And really, it, it's of a particular interest of mine because we've had so many problems with the town in the last couple of years. But I'd like to help alleviate that situation. I really don't think there's anything more important than zoning. It goes beyond just residential and commercial. It really affects the character of the whole town. I live in Mystic, so we have some particular problems. Here, people in Noink have some particular issues that they have to deal with. But overall, the, the way that we look at our town, the way we interact with the people in the town, it really all comes down to zoning. I don't think there's anything more important than that.
Absolutely. Councillors, do you have any questions for Mr. McDermott?
Yeah, this is Councillor Brennan. I just have one question. I appreciate willingness to serve Mr. McDermott and you know, been, been watching a lot of your, your information, your tenacity for certain things in the, in the town. My, my question is really, do you feel that you'll be comfortable in being unbiased in certain things? I know you have a certain view, I think, on short-term rentals. And my only question or concern would be, have you already made your mind up on certain zoning matters? And do you have a willingness to be flexible? I'm not saying to be for them. I just want to make sure there's a willingness to be somewhat open and not completely down the path, because when I choose someone to be on a committee, I want that person to be, they may have strong views, but they still need to be open to, to comments and do willingness to hear the other side. And I have a question and concern on, on your ability to do that. So we'd just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Sure. Well, I've, I've been on the various commissions and boards for a long time. Chairman of the Board of Education, on the RTM mentoring in the school system. And I think that for sure, I can keep an open mind on things. The, the current controversy with regard to the short-term rentals, my wish is that it go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I'm not now a member, but that's where I think it all belongs. And that's happened. So I'm happy with that. I think they'll make a decision that we all can live with, and that's really the people that should make the decision because these folks have their charter from the state of Connecticut, not the town. They can be pretty unbiased, I think, in the way that they think. And I certainly think that I can keep an open mind. I've shown that before, I believe, in the positions that I've held. So I don't have any concern with regard to that. I hope that kind of answers your question.
It does. And I just would, you know, would love you to encourage that open mindedness, and I appreciate you willing to do that.
Absolutely. Sure.
Mr. McDermott, reading through your, your resume before and then seeing the bullet points on this application. You've been a volunteer for the city or for the town for many, many years, I see. And I applaud you for that. I've seen you in the past. I've seen some of the stuff that you've done. I think it's very, very impressive. Are you, now it says currently on the Groton Beautification Committee and Groton Zoning Board of Appeals. And I apologize for not being 100% up on this, but are you going to have to drop one of those to take this on?
No, the Beautification Committee, we just had a meeting last night, for instance. I am pretty much the, for want of a better word, the resident artist that is kind of promoting things like murals and sculpture. I've got a sculpture of mine over at the Senior Center to start that whole process going in the town so that we can beautify it. The whole idea being that we can get people that come through Groton and just pass through, maybe give us a second look and stay, because I think that that's a, a real deal that we need to put together. We meet once a month. Pretty much my own time is spent with regard to putting together anything like brochures or logos or dealing with artists. It's what I do anyway in my spare time. So that's not a problem for me. I don't do any of the planting of flowers and so forth that the other folks do. They're much better at that than I am. And the zoning board of appeals, they rarely meet. They do meet, but it's not anywhere near as often as you might expect. The last couple of meetings were canceled. We just generally don't have many things come up before us. But it's important to know what the zoning board, the zoning rules are, of course, for, for things like that. But no, it's not a, a meeting that is, doesn't take up anywhere near the time that the Town Council does, for instance, or the Board of Education, or the RTM, not at all like that.
I recognize that you have, I recognize that with your, you know, Board of Education, RTM, you obviously know a number of people. You've been around the town for a long time. And so I think you'll be able to work with a lot of those individuals as they come to you for different things. So I appreciate your, your candor. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Westerville. My only other question, Mr. McDermott, would be obviously the Plan of Conservation and, POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development is the guiding document that the town uses, as in the commission uses to guide their decision-making process as far as, you know, compliance with our zoning regulations. And so my question to you is, do you believe that the POCD is a, you know, written by the zoning commission in conjunction with the planning commission, is a good document and a good guiding force for developments in our, in our town?
I'm not sure that I'm familiar with what you, you're talking about, Councillor Baumgartner. What is that?
Our Plan of Conservation and Development here in the town?
Well, I've not read the, the document in its entirety is, but so can you enlighten me a little bit about what that is?
Yes. So the Plan of Conservation and Development is, you know, a document with guiding principles for the town to follow as far as, you know, how we ought to develop our community in the future. So, you know, what we should focus on and, and.
Okay, all right. I've got you now. Yeah. That is off, part of that is incorporated in the actual zoning information that we all get when we get on any of these zoning boards. Yes, that, that's an excellent document. It has a lot of great features in it. It's an optimistic document, I think, looking forward. Yes, I would agree wholeheartedly with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McBride. Councillor McBride, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just, I'm a little confused because I was under the understanding, maybe incorrect me that if, if Mr. McDermott moves on to that committee, that he may need to resign from the ZBA. So I'm not sure if we can get Clerk McCauser thought on that, because that, that's how I understood it. I just wanted, didn't know if that was true or not.
Yeah, that's, that's why I had my, yes, it's, it's, we were guided by the town charter and the town charter states that committees and commissions and agencies that are formed by Connecticut general statute, which are all of our major committees, so ZBA, Historic District, Planning and Zoning, Town Council, so forth. You can't serve on more than one board. And so we can, I think it's designed so you spread the wealth, so to speak. So he would have from the beautification committee, don't want to lose on that. That's, you know, the Town Council created that. It wasn't facilitated by the general statutes. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Well, that's something I wasn't aware of. That's interesting. Well, if that's the case, then I guess I would have to do that. I would do that.
Yeah, just ZBA, but not beautification.
Right. Yes.
Yes, Councillor McBride.
Yeah, thanks. And just are on the same page. We've already moved forward with, with Mr. McDermott's move already. The council approved that. So, right, this isn't, we're not acting tonight. This has already been done. We approved this last meeting or meeting ago, correct? And the council approved?
No, no, we, we have not. So if, if we can, if we recall what transpired at our previous council meeting, we, we made a motion to appoint Steve Hudacek to the Planning and Zoning Commission, elevate him from an alternate member to a regular, a full, a regular voting member. And it was, his nomination was passed unanimously by this committee. Each of us supported his nomination. And then when it got to the floor, we, and actually, part of the reason we didn't advance any of the alternates was because of, again, that technical difficulty issue. So what transpired was when we made the nomination in the council vote for Mr. Hudacek, to elevate Mr. Hudacek, the council, you know, a councillor made a motion to recommend appointment of a different applicant for somebody who had applied as an alternate, as a full voting member. And so we took no action on any of the alternate applications.
Okay. Thank you for that. I recall that now, as you said. Thanks.
Councillor Westerville?
However, we did move Mr. Hudacek up to the regular panel, the regular member. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So that, that position was filled by Mr. Hudacek, and so we still have two open alternates, I believe.
That is right.
Correct. If you needed verification, that is correct. You're perfectly on target, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, and I, do councillors have any other questions for Mr. McDermott?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Mr. McDermott, thank you so much for your willingness to serve on a border, in board or commission. Once again, I'll apologize about the, again, the technical difficulties at our last meeting, but glad we had the opportunity to speak with you. Obviously, you have a wealth of knowledge and are a very committed public servant and volunteer to our town. And so just for the record, I do want to state that, and thank you for your continued interest in serving. And I, should you need anything, obviously, please reach out to the clerk, Town Clerk as well.
Thank you, Councillor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Thank you.
Now, just some housekeeping. Madam Clerk, just looking at the kind of the calendar of when certain appointments are going to come up in the near future, I understand that there will be a Planning and Zoning, regular Planning and Zoning Commission member that will be up for reappearance shortly. I did notice that a lot of the applications for approval this evening are kind of proactively appointed or, you know, making a recommendation to reappoint members worth a term expiring sometime in December. And I did notice that one app, one application for renomination was missing in, likely because, you know, maybe just the the chair of the board of the commission hasn't gotten to it yet or, or is waiting until the next meeting. But I just wanted to clarify that. I understand that there will be Mr. Kane, for example, Michael Kane, a current Planning and Zoning Commission member, his term would be expiring at the, in December. Is that correct?
Boy, I'm looking. That memo, and yeah, I've got, I've got a new person in my office who's helped me, and she's very officious and already filed it. Without, well, I've got the agenda thing about right here.
Excellent.
He said, planning and zoning.
Yes.
Planning and zoning. It's alternate positions. I don't, in one, Michael Kane is a December. It's possible that Jeff Pritchard just didn't grab that one. I, he's very good, so he'll get it for your next meeting.
Okay. And, and I mentioned that because just as far for the Personal Appointments Committee, I, I would hate to have what transpired at our last council meeting where we took up personnel, took up personnel items to happen again. Obviously, with the vacancy of that significance coming up on the horizon, you know, should we advance any alternates, a similar move will be made to fill what would be an expiring term for the regular council. So, you know, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I, I see, you know, obviously, even for something as, you know, as, I shouldn't say minor, but our Personnel and Appointments Committee is certainly well-attended, I think, has been more well-attended than most personnel committees in, you know, in my time on, on the council. So I do want to handle these matters with due diligence, with, you know, with you know, significant due diligence to ensure that we are, you know, treating all of our applicants fairly and with respect in that, you know, truly duly qualified members, you know, will not be subject to any petty politics. So my, my question is, you know, at this point now, actually, it's not really a question, but I would just share with the Personal Appointments, given that matter, I'm very uncomfortable taking up any application for the alternate position until we reappoint the member to the, the member who is expiring or whose term will be expiring at the end of the year to that committee, to ensure that when we provide our list of recommendations to the Personnel and Appointments Committee, I'm sorry, our Personnel and Appointments Committee, recommendations to the council, that, you know, our recommendations will be treated fairly inequitably and because of procedural rules, you know, our recommendations, you know, will not be impacted, if that makes sense, gentlemen.
I'm sorry, Mr., really, you know, you have to understand that statutes are very Europe or the commission, regardless of your term expiration, your member. You could have expiration for five years. You're still a board member. So I'm concerned myself, if I were on this board with Mr. Kane's pen expiration, but you have two gaping holes, and I'll tell you, if somebody's sick, so those are very important to fill. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't wait on those.
All right. Councillor Westerville? Councillor McBride, any, any comment?
No, I mean, I can see where you're, where you're coming from. I'm just looking, you're still. I mean, I can see both your points, but I, I think it's important to fill those alternates. There's still four others that are on the committee. And I'm just thinking, the worst-case scenario, if someone doesn't show, you would need, you would need those alternates to fill those spots in order to have a core. So I can see where, where, where the clerk's coming from. But I do, I do appreciate your, your value and the importance of Michael Kane, making sure that, that, that term is renewed. So I think, although that's critical, I think that should, that should still be able to be completed by next month. I mean, I can't, I think we can do everything. Can we, can we do it all? I mean, can't we? Can we fulfill the alternates and make sure that Mr. Kane is reappointed?
Not without, again, perhaps unintended consequences when it comes to a council vote. I just want to warn the council in my time, and, you know, having served for almost five years on this town council, in the past, when personnel and appointments have made recommendations to the council, not only were they passed unanimously, but they were passed on consent without any issue. Almost every meeting that has been challenged since we have started this year, this term, every, almost every meeting where we voted on personnel appointments, where a member of our council has removed a name or two or a slate of names from the consent calendar for an individual vote. So I, I very much respect for your coming from Councillor McBride, but I, out of respect to our applicants, out of respect of, again, the process that we've established for years and the precedent we have established for I, I.
Really have to.
Fundamentally. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
It's a point of order. You're way, way out.
Madam Clerk.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman, but you, you know, statutes.
Madam Clerk.
And there's no way that the Town Council could ever unseat a term that isn't Jane is fine. But your, your gaping holes are maybe a problem. The county, in comparison to my tenure with working with all the boards and commissions, even before I was Town Clerk, and it's only recent he, the council had boards and commissions under consent. It was started, it was a new, there's reasons for it, and I don't want to belabor, because you've I'm here to get your work done, so I don't want to labor this, but please. Don't worry about, you know, come in strong. You've got a, you've got a good group here.
Absolutely. And I would just leave it really on, on this final note, just as much as, you know, again, what had transpired as far as our, our boards or commission approvals go within our regular council, just like the individual council members have thrown any prerogative or the ability to do such a thing. We also have the ability not to advance applicants through this committee. So I, you know, I, I think out of that process, and certainly, I, you know, there is, again, an established precedent to, you know, to respect our, all of the applications and certainly the recommendations of this committee. And certainly, we're not right, you know, always right. I'm not saying all three of us, we have, you know, the right answers to all the problems, but I do think, again, you know, Councillor Westerville, myself and Councillor McBride do represent a cross-spectrum of view, you know, viewpoints here in our town. And so when, you know, we can come to, to an agreement on, on qualified candidates for boards or commissions, I, I would hope that, you know, certainly the entire process, especially, you know, from our council, that, that you know, that, that, that work is respected as well. So I'm speaking as a chair for a committee I'm very proud of. And, you know, committee consisting of great members and, and great support, including from yourself, Madam Clerk. So, you know, I, I just want to state that for the record. But obviously, we got a lot of business to get to. So, Councillor Westerville, Councillor McBride, certainly respect your perspective and point of view on this.
I just want to ask one question just for clarification. So is there, the makeup of this, because I don't have it in front of me, the Planning and Zoning, how many permanent members are there and how many alternates?
There are five permanent members and three alternates. Is that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that is correct. You've got five regular members, the alternates.
And we currently have two vacancies for Personnel and Appointments Committee, for, for alternate positions.
Two alternates on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And as of now, two applicants.
And you have pound red heat and applied for them.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just still contemplating all of this, but thank you.
All right. So. Um, with that, unless, uh, you know, somebody's willing to make a motion, I, I have plenty of candidates I'd like to advance out of personal appointments this evening. All right.
I'm not prepared to make a motion at this time.
Excellent. Um, Council McBride.
No, I'm going to follow your direction. You have more experience than I do on this, so I will follow your recommendation.
All right. So with that, we have a series of. Or a, a host of applicants that submitted applications for appointment or reappointment to the personnel and appointments committee. Um, first and foremost, a reappointment to the shellfish commission. Um, I will make a motion to reappoint Stephen Jones, Democrat of 11 Chesbrough. In knowing to the shelf, shellfish commission with the term expiring 1231 2027. Any discussion?
McBride will second that.
All right. Motion's made by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Onto the reappointment of Jay Loudon, Democrat, 17 Sachem Road, knowing to the shellfish commission with the term expiring 1231 2027. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now to the reappointment, an alternate. Of Thomas, um, reappointing Thomas Weeks as an alternate to the harbor management commission of one. 10 Irving Street Mystic with the term expiring nine. Oh, one, 2025. So moved.
McBride second.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the reappointment of Barbara Nagy. Unaffiliated, who is the secretary of the library board. Of 201 Broad Street in Groton. With the term expiring 1231 2021, 25. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor by indicate by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to Marilyn Comrie, non-affiliated. Um, reappoint, I, um, I'll make a motion to reappoint Ms. Comrie. Of 566 Sandy Hollow Road and Mystic to the library board with the term expiring 1231 2025. So moved.
McBride second.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the reappointment of Carol Pratt, Democrat. Secretary of 124 Ridgewood Drive Mystic. I'll, I'll make a motion to reappoint. Ms. Pratt to the retirement board with the term expiring 1231 2026. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
All right, aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to. Jeffrey Blevins, unaffiliated voter, who's also the treasurer of the Jabez Smith House. Um, I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Blevins of 17 Ashby Street Mystic to the Jabez Smith House Committee. The term expiring September 7, 2026. So moved.
McBride second.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those indicate by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to Richard Dixon, Democrat. Of 15 Route 27, Old Mystic. Um, I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Dixon to the Jabez Smith House Committee with the term expiring nine, seven, 2026. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the reappointment of Scott Rizzuto, Republican. To the 20, uh, to, uh, to the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Rizzuto of 25 New London Road Mystic. His term, should he be appointed, will expire on 1231 2027. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Rizzuto to the zoning board of appeals. So moved.
Second in McBride.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the reappointment of William Mensah, Republican, to the zoning board of appeals. Um, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Mensah of 476 New London Road Mystic to the zoning board of appeals with the term expiring 1231 2029. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. In, uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
All right, aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the reappointment of Douglas Smith, non-affiliated voter. Um, to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate. Mr. Smith lives at 37 Island Circle here in Groton. So I'll make a motion to approve, appoint Mr. Smith to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate to the. Uh, zoning board of appeals, uh, with the term expiring 1231 2027. So moved.
McBride seconded.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the appointment as an alternate. Of Dana Summararo, Democrat to 202 High Street and Mystic. Uh, to the community development advisory committee, the term expiring two, seven, 2024. So I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Summararo as an alternate to the community development advisory committee. So moved.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Now on to the reappointment of Marie Shaw, who is currently the vice chair of the library board. Make a motion to her, uh, uh, lives at 20 Colony Road in Groton. I'll make a motion to reappoint Shaw to the library board with the term expiring 1231 2025. So moved.
Seconded McBride.
Motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Um, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously. Um, I will note just as far as the Fair Rent Commission goes. Um, Betsy, I think we, we ought to talk offline. Um, you have concerns that right now as of, uh, the compliance for the criteria. That certain board members have to meet to serve on the fair rent commission. Um, it's highly specific as far as, um, how many folks can be appointed who are either a renter or a landlord. Um, and as well as the, um. Uh, ensuring that there's compliance as far as minority representation. We can talk offline on that, but I'm not comfortable at this time moving forward with those applications until that is clarified. And lastly, um, already we went over the issue. We already discussed, um, the applications for planning and zoning commission. Um, I at this time do not feel comfortable advancing any alternate. Um, or appointments, um, without. Um, completing the, or making a motion to reappoint a, the member to the, um, regular member to the person, to the planning and zoning commission. Um, so with that, I have no other, um, business unless.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You've got, you must, you must Dominic Bassey for. Um, Parks and Rec and Mark Oldfinger for the retirement board.
Oh, I appointed Mark, we, we were appointed Mark Oldfinger to the, um, retirement.
Dominic Bassey.
I think we skipped over both of them.
We skipped over Mr. Oldfinger, yes.
Yes. All right. My apologies. That was an oversight in.
And Dominic Bassey for the Parks and, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, well, actually we'll tackle from the top and work our way down from that. Um, so thank you again. Um, I will make a motion to reappoint Dominic Bassey, Democrat's chair of, uh, to, uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Bassey lives at 951 Eastern Point Road. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Bassey to the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term expiring 1231 2027. So moved.
McBride will second.
Um, thank you. Um, motion by Baumgartner, seconded by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. And I'll also make a motion and thank you again for pointing out the oversight. I'll make a motion to reappoint, um, Mr. Mark Offinger, an unaffiliated voter, who is currently the vice chair of the, uh, retirement board. 201 Broad Street. Make a motion to reappoint Mr. Offinger to the retirement board with the term expiring 1231 2025. So moved.
You also have. Also have a.
Let's complete the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, your vote, I thought your vote went through.
Um, well, I just, we're going to do it again just for, uh, we can't obviously watch the meeting, uh, the, the meeting right now on the YouTube channel has been uploaded yet. Uh, it's happening in real time. So, um, just, just for safety purposes, I'll, um, just to make sure we cover our tracks. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second? Do we have?
McBride will second. Scott's, um, busy, I think.
All right. Uh, motion by Baumgartner, seconded by, um, McBride. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. And I heard, I heard you Scott. All right.
He said, Mr. Goodman, and he's in waiting. For you.
Okay, yes, um. And we have his application for reappointment.
You.
Okay, excellent. I will.
Letters and so forth. You've got a lot of stuff.
Yes. All right, I will elevate. Sir Goodman. Hello, Mr. Goodman.
It's not instant.
How's it going, Mr. Goodman? Uh, welcome to the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. We understand you have submitted an application for reappointment to the, uh, Historic District Commission. And like we avail every applicant for appointment or reappointment, uh, avail the opportunity for you to make your case to the council as far as, uh, to the, um, personal appointments committee as far as why. Um, you ought to be reappointed or why. Um, and, and certainly why you're interested in serving or continuing to serve on our board of commission. Uh, first and foremost, want to thank you for your service. Uh, to the Historic District Commission. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I, you know, we have the unique task of, of appointing folks to our various ABCs. And so with that, you know, I, um, I've watched and reviewed many, um, meetings in our, um, town, you know, town government and certainly the. Um, that would include the Historic District Commission. And so I've seen your work and just want to thank you again for, um, your service to our town. Um, and your willingness to volunteer and serve our community. Um, so with that, I will, um, ask any, um, well, I'll certainly ask you. If you would like to share a few words as to, as to why you'd like to serve on, on the historic, continue to serve on the Historic District Commission.
Sure. Um, thank you, counselor. Actually, just to save your time, I think that my letter that I submitted this morning. Pretty much outlines, um, my point of view, um, with regards to serving on that commission. You know, I've served on that for a couple of years now and I'd like to continue my position and serve on it going forward. Um, but I think that that letter pretty clearly identifies, uh, where I stand. So I guess, um, I'd turn it over to you if you have any questions or your other counselors.
Uh, Council Westerville or, or Council McBride, do you have any questions?
I, I don't at this point. I haven't fully reviewed. I know there's, there was some information that came across today. I haven't reviewed it entirely, but I'm. I think I will have some questions in the future, but not at this time.
I apologize. I have not had a chance to review that letter, um, as well as some other emails that have come in. So I'm not prepared to ask questions at this time.
Okay, and, um, Matt, Madam, Madam Clerk.
Yes, I'm here.
I, I do have a question, um, you know, maybe not so obvious to the public, but we did receive correspond, a series of correspondence from a lot of different folks regarding this particular reappointment. I understand and it was highly irregular, but the chair of the committee did not recommend his, uh, reappointment. Uh, did include in the app, uh, failed to include any applicate or any information within the application, uh, when. Me back up, I apologize. Uh, failed to include any information within the reappointment application. Um, as far as why, uh, Mr. Goodman on not to be reappointment, reappointed, just simply check the box that says no. Chair does not recommend reappointment. And then additionally included. Incorrect information regarding the number of me, meeting, uh, you know, number of meetings that the applicant did or did not, uh, attend. Um, there, it seems like there was an oversight on, on that, on the chair's part as well regarding how many meetings. The, um, uh, Mr. Goodman attended when in fact he attended far more than what was, uh, included in that application. So was there. Um, just for your record from your, your office, any clarifying information regarding that?
Yes, I can speak extensively to this, uh. So you are so right that the reappointment application, you know, you had to look at it twice. Like a regular, you know, reappointment. To notice that she'd circled no. And so, but I have to tell you that, um, the chairman is. Commission. And, uh, that's effective, uh, as of, as of the 15th October. And, um, so, you know, there's, there's a. Could be set, any of the Historic District Commission's meetings from. March till, till current, that little last one, you'll get a very. Thing about the role of all of the members. And, um, it seems to me that. There's, um, you know, there's always a point drawn back to the regulations. That Mr. Goodman, because he's so, he's so, um, ad, advise items that it's, it was very evident that he was important to the chairman. Meetings. And then, um, when they had a disagreement, things kind of went south. So. But I didn't see, I didn't see any reason, you know, you want to, you want to commission with, with, with the. You can't all be, uh, wearing green pants, you know? So. Just, there is a letter that, uh, the consent that you all received. Uh, and it's lengthy, but it still is really, it's quite vague. Uh, there, there, we have tendence is not, he has not missed. Things, so erroneous. Uh, so, and, um, lots of. Information that if you haven't read it, you should read it. There's no hurry to, to, to do this. Either.
Yes, and, and I, and I have, and in your judgment, Madam Clerk, would it be inappropriate for this council? To move forward with an application based off of, uh, accusations to say the unsubstantiated accusations, to say the least.
This heavens, that's the S. I mean, that's like saying, because you voted one way. Due to run for reelection. I mean, it's exactly what this, this is boiling down.
I vote my way. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I missed you when, uh, your, your, your thesis statement. I apologize.
I'm sorry, I'm in Eastern Point. We have a lousy service here, but the, the point being. If you disagree with, with one of your board members, that's not a reason. Throw them out of, off the board. If you voted some way that the, that, that some. Would it be right for them not to, to let, you know, have you run for reelection? You don't say, it's really. Uh, we, we went through this before. With, with the council trying to and did recreate the history. And it, and it kind of backfired and we're seeing that repercussion now, but you. So it's coming back to a real commission. It's not just a rubber stamp anymore.
Thank, thank you for that, Madam Clerk. So in, in, again, just to be clear, in your judgment. They thank you for that, Madam Clerk, so in in again, just to be clear, in your judgment, um nothing should or preclude um our council moving forward with this application at this moment, or would it be?
You could do it, absolutely, there's no reason for him, but there's no rush to.
Okay.
I'm, I just want to say, um whatever you decide to do, um uh obviously, I could, I appreciate your time and and I think you should do what you you feels right. If you do choose to move forward on it tonight, I would still encourage you to read both the letter from her and my letter, um which was sent after her letter and response to her letter. Just to get a sense of what I think is a problem in the town currently um with regards to development and um you know, how certain boards and commissions that are land use related are taking um or are liberal with the regulations, I should say. Um I, you know, I I'm in a very unique position, as I say in the letter, I'm a developer and a builder, so I make my money by building and developing. However, the rules and the regulations are in place and when we sign up for these committees, um you have an obligation to follow those, whether or not you agree with them. As you asked the gentleman earlier about the Planning and Zoning Committee, you know, he may have his preconcert conceived determinations, but he can't walk into a meeting with those in mind. He needs to walk into the meeting with the rules and regs and here you know, I did that in on numerous occasions and followed them, even though I didn't always agree with them, but I followed them. Other commission members who have now resigned did not, and that's a problem. So I would say, if you choose to move forward, please still read the letters, because I think you just should be aware of a sentiment from the residents of, you know, let's slow down, let's take our time, let's follow the rules and a counter argument from certain individuals. Some staff, some board members that are saying, no, let's build, build, build. Who cares what happens and it's it's gonna have an impact on the town that I care a lot about.
Wow, um very poignant words and uh certainly, just as somebody who has observed uh the Historic District Commission, I I do recall uh a very courageous vote you took um and to uh save um the historic cottage in the downtown core that was set to be raised. And in fact, it um the state did intervene and um as a result, that home was saved, but it um it the state had to intervene because of the actions of the Historic District Commission and you um if I recall, voted to um to save that cottage, um so.
I did, and again, I just remind you, I mean, I'm and I say this in the letter too, like my business comes from the architects and engineers that appear in front of that commission and even ones that I worked for and worked for me, I will still and do vote and argue for what the rules say, not what I personally feel. Um and that has hurt me financially at times and that's fine, because that's a choice to make as a public servant. Um or a public appointee or whatever the term is, but you need to follow the rules. If you don't want to follow the rules, you shouldn't be on these commissions.
May I add also, Chairman, that there is a vacancy resignation of Sarah Moriarty. Um and um after her resignation, she did actually submit uh a suggestion that um William Ferguson be moved into the uh vacancy. So that's, you you just received that today, you don't need to work on that until next month.
Okay, all right, and just to be clear for uh the term, what was the Mr. Goodman's expiring term for the Historic District Commission? Uh the the ex- the expiration date for the term that he is said to vacate?
Can I just jump in for one second, I have to apologize. Um, I have to actually go to the commission, so I'm gonna leave you on and I can jump in if you need me.
Okay, we're all set, Mr. Goodman, thank you.
It's a twenty twenty six, so it's the same twelve thirty one twenty twenty six.
All right, thank you. Um so, um with that, I I will make a motion to a repoint on Mr. Eric Goodman of the Historic District Commission. Um with the term expiring twelve thirty one twenty twenty six, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is, I keep uh jumping back between the stones, so.
All right, so moved. Uh motion by bum gardener segmented by West, discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, I I'm not, I'm not opposed to Mr. Goodman, what he sounds like, he sounds like a terrific individual and making the right decisions. But what I am opposed to is is um approving something that I haven't read when there's three or four letters that have come out today and I haven't read them all and and my apologies, but I don't like to read, you know, I can't be held uh responsible for not reading something a couple hours before, so I I'm not I'm not, again, I'm not opposed to moving forward, Mr. Goodman, he sounds genuine and I I will probably move forward with him, but I think I I need more time to review this, yeah, in lieu of all the letters that are being passed around, it's especially, you know, considering there were two on this earlier this evening that we were moving to another meeting for numerous other reasons that we've reviewed, you know, numerous times over the last few months, so I'm I'm hesitant to move forward so quickly on his um his his movement, uh so I'm I will be abstaining from this vote, uh because I think we need a little more time, although I do believe I'll be voting in favor, just not like, you you know, under under the gun, so I say, thank you.
Um, um I'd like to withdraw my second, um just because I do, I do agree, I got caught up there for a minute, but I I do agree, I think we do need a little more time to move forward with this.
A- absolutely, and I I I certainly hear your um perspective as well, Mr. McBride. Um I do know that we we have been in receipt um for, I think, a little over a month that the application for reappointment. Um um it actually were lack thereof, um but with that said, you know, as I mentioned, I've a dear amount of respect for each of you and um want to make sure you do have the time um to review all of that information, so um I am comfortable with that and um.
One one thing I want to ask ask for of the committee that you consider re reviewing the policy because this particular appointment, I've been trying and I'm not kidding for almost two years to get her to, you know, get her to move on. And and other appointments, so it's not just.
And just just to be clear, Madam Clerk, when did Mr. Goodman's term expire?
Uh it expired uh last year, December of last year, and so we you know, we we are very diligent about keeping um communication with the chairs three months in advance of the of of the expiration, so you have time to get it onto the council agenda. We may, we may, uh we may want to move that to more like four months.
I I guess I jumped through one second too, she also purposely tabled it and she admits that in her letter to you. And I I guess my only other question would be, and I I'm fine with you waiting, I understand that. But my understanding is the majority or or all of the letters that you received were in favor of my reappointment, not any against except for her letter, so I mean, believe, believe me, please take your time if you choose to take it, but if you're gonna read five or six letters that all say I should be on it, I'm I'm not sure how many times people need to tell you that. But I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I guess I have a question, you know, I review, this package comes out with a wealth of information and, you know, it's fifty nine sixty five pages long. And then I I didn't see any of Mr. Goodman's information in this package and then we get a revised package that has more information in it. Like, I don't, I don't, I don't have an application or I don't have any other information other than the letter, so I'm just you know, questioning, I'd like to review that information, that's all, I mean, I'm.
No, and I understand what you're saying, I just, I also know that this, we've been trying to get this reappointment done in one way or another, um you know, and and I'm, again, I'm happy to reappear, I'm happy to answer any questions you have tonight, I'm happy to tell you the entire story if you'd like to, it's it's up to you, um so I have twenty five minutes, but but I can do whatever it is you'd like to do, so it's it's really in your hands.
No, and I don't think it's a matter of you appearing, yet I think it's a matter of us getting information similar to what we receive for all of these other reappointments and other appointments, I I didn't, maybe I just missed the email, I don't have that information from from Mr. Goodman, is that because the chair who's resigned didn't provide that, and if that's the case, can someone else provide that to us, so we have, I just want to be consistent on our approach and how we're reviewing all these various appointments. Seems like this is kind of off to the side, like I don't have any paper. Am I missing something?
It must be because I sent everything to uh the chairman and to uh town manager and town manager staff and that's how that's that's the way things move to your committee, so and and I mean, I can, I can send everything to everybody if you'd like me to, that's fine with me.
I guess I'm just saying, it's not in the, you know, we get this two-page document that lists all of the, all of the pieces of reappointments and appointments, it's not in that consolidated listing.
And Chair, Chair, uh well, uh C- Council McBride and and I um Madam Clerk can back me up on this, um I have no inputs or anything to do with what is placed on the agenda as far as applications go, that process is entirely out of out of our hands, as committee members, we are given a slate of candidates, we are not too intrusive that, we do not meddle with that, that is entirely uh a collaborative effort between the town manager's office and our town clerk. Um, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, but you should have received the packet October third, uh according to my records.
Yes, we all did receive the inform Mr. Goodwin sent to us, um via correspondence was sent via email.
Along with Ted Kitesman. Yes, that's, you're right, you know, we get we get this, you know, this information sporadically also, and so we try to put together a meeting once a month and sometimes we don't get things except the day of the meeting, it's, I know, it, that's the way it works.
Yeah, I guess I must have missed the email, because I look at this document that comes out that has a consolidated listing as my base.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know, at least it didn't have it on there, but um I I, you know, I don't make the agenda either, so it just may have been, whoops, forgot it, because it was October third that it was sent to the the Personnel and Appointments Committee.
All right.
So, what I do see, um I do see the reappointment questionnaire. Um but that's all I see, there's no other additional documentation, um except for where it circled as no, so that's kind of all we have to go by until we started getting all these letters.
I I think what happened was she sent in just that and only that after being repeatedly asked for that for over a year and then at that point they're trying to throw which then resulted in me asking her for the reasons why, but she submitted that vague letter, which then I responded to in my.
That's, that's right, and that was all the fifteenth of October and today.
All right, well, uh we we've, we've met for over an hour now, um we will act on this application and please also extend. Um I understand now there will be alternate positions opening as well. Uh Madam Clerk and because of or in regular member.
No, no, you've got a, you've got one altern, no, excuse me. Uh you're not, I goofed up here, so Sarah Moriarty, the chair resigned, so there's a full member position available and um um there's another one because of Bonnie Malt, so there's two full members missing. And the chair did suggest William Ferguson after she resigned. Uh but, you know, still worth, it's worth its weight, you know, she served with him. And uh that's it, you don't have any other oh, Ted Kitesman was the other person who's should be considered, as he's been attending all the meetings, but that you know, you want to, you need to interview, you need to interview yes, both Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Kitesman.
Yes, and please, please extend for our next meeting, the uh opportunity for interview to those two candidates as well, Madam Clerk.
Will do.
Excellent. All right, uh Mr. Goodman, any any final comments or any important information you'd like to share with us before we conclude this meeting?
No, again, I just like, I guess to echo of the um the points just made is that you have now three voting members, one not technically reappointed, but I, as we said earlier in the meeting, can sit as long as until I'm not reappointed, I guess. Um but it's gonna be tough to get a quorum with that limited people, we we did face that early on when I joined the HCC back in twenty eighteen where I think we only had four members and it was, it was tough, so. Hey, you know, again, I I understand what you're saying, I just uh would also just remind you that there are people that have application.
All right, well, thank, again, Mr. Goodman, th- thank you again for joining us this evening. Um we will uh follow back up at our next meeting for a vote on the uh for the Historic District Commission applications. Um but obviously, if you do need anything, please, um you know, for those cover correspondences to or any clarifying questions, please forward those correspondence through um the clerk's office as we um uh have established the precedent that all communications for ABCs go through, goes through her office uh office and she uh disseminates that that information to all the committee members.
Sure, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Goodman. Counselors, um any, any other business?
No, so we'll take this up as well, all three of those positions up at the next, the next meeting, right?
Yes, and perhaps and and who knows, maybe by then there will there there's a lot going on with that commission, so um it's very much in flux, so uh we may be appointing more, uh depending on how things go, so. Um but um with that, I I have nothing, no other person, business other than, I just want to thank Madam Clerk, it was a you know, a bit more of an eventful uh committee meeting than usual, so thank you again for your indulgence, Madam Clerk and um your.
I'm here for, what I'm here for.
I know, I know, but it's a, it's, you're off the clock, so, um but your your um service is is appreciated, so just want to thank you.
No, twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, and same for you guys, your counselors, no matter what. I'm I'm elected, so that's how it works.
All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by uh the muted.
I'll I'll second that motion.
Uh and then we have a second from uh Council McBride.
Sorry about that.
No, don't apologize. All right, so with that, um I will call for a vote, all those in favor of adjournment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstention motion carries unanimously, um gentlemen, good evening, Madam Clerk, uh good evening and uh participants and Groton residents, thank you.
Don't forget to stop the recording.
All right, meeting has concluded, thank you.
Thanks, take care.